Ladies and gentlemen, we call the meeting to order if you would rise please for Mr. Wilder to lead us in prayer, Mr. Jackson.
I would bow with us. Your Lord, we want to thank you for another beautiful day and all the many blessings you bestow upon this community, our great state and our great country. We ask that you look over us this evening, guide us, let us be patient with our judgments this evening. We ask you to please look over our first responders and look after us here in this community. I want to thank you for having let us live in a country where we can have these public meetings and thank you so much for the public that has come to help participate this evening. We ask that you give us all a safe ride home from this meeting this evening. All these things in Jesus's name we ask, amen.
I make a motion for approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Need approval for this night's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify with your right hands. Excuse me. We have to read this before every meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is recommending the body, Fleming County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on July the 18th, 2023. You wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller. You obtain a request to speak for them. Any requests with the public here will have a minimum of 10 minutes permitted per side of the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. Advocate would be allowed to speak first. Remember, the public may speak after. Either side may see their time during the hearing they so desire. Anytime someone addresses the commission, we request that you come to the microphone and give your name and address, please. First item on the agenda is massage operator's license, Mr. Will Butler.
Senator Sheriff's request for massage operator's license for Dodra Miller, our major, excuse me, DBA Divine Wellness by Dodra at 108 North Bel Air Road, Suite 7A. She's on on premise and mobile massage services from this property. She meets all the requirements of the ordinance, the staff recommends approval.
Comments? Have a motion to accept or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Dodra Major at 108 North Bel Air Road, Suite 7A and Mobile Massage Services.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hands. Opposed. Second one, Mr. Butler.
Yeah, this is a this is for Body and Soul Therapeutic Massage of Augusta LLC, DBA Body and Soul Augusta, located at 3685 Riverwatch Parkway, Suite 100. This is on premise only and staff recommends approval of the request because it meets all of the requirements of the ordinance.
Comments? Have a motion to accept or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Body and Soul Therapeutic Massage of Augusta LLC, DBA Body and Soul Augusta at 3685 Riverwatch Parkway, Suite 100.
Second.
Second.
All in favor with your right hand. This next information is presented as information only by Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This was a minor waiver request at 2820 Towering Oak Drive. This was for a reduction in the front setback. This property is located in the Rhodes Farms subdivision and is zoned R1, single-family residential. The required front setback is 65 feet from the center line of the street. Here you can see their overall development plan for the site with the minimum building line marked and you'll see that the the house and the structures are meeting that. So the issue in this case was this retaining wall that's being constructed. It does get shorter as it gets closer to the road, but it is it was just over eight feet at that minimum building line. In this R1 district, retaining walls in front of that minimum building line have to be eight feet or less. So essentially, we did the minor waiver to move that front setback six feet closer to the road to accommodate that retaining wall where it was just over eight feet. And this was approved on June 6th.
Thank you, ma'am. The rest of the meeting tonight will be public hearings. First one on the agenda is Mr. Douglas.
Yes, sir. This is an application for conditional approval, conditional for approval of a conditional use at 635 River Pines Drive. This shows the location of the property just north of the end of Mulliken Road abutting the Savannah River. This shows the property's zoning, R1, single-family residential. Again, this is an application for conditional use. So the zoning district is not going to change on this property. They're simply seeking approval of their conditional use within the R1 zoning that preexists at this location. This is an aerial of the location and there, as you'll see, this River Pine subdivision development has five lots. That'll be important in a moment. We'll view the plat for the property and the concept plan for the development of the site in which the the lot lines for those five separate lots will be abandoned as a part of this development, leaving one lot of just north of 14 acres. But this is the existing home where it stands currently. Again, this is the plat for the property, again, showing those five lots which will those lot lines will be abandoned. So this will be a singular lot as illustrated here on the concept plan. Additionally, the construction of the new structure for the bed and breakfast is going to move about 100 yards uphill, further away from the river on this lot from where the existing home currently stands. Again, as bed and breakfast is a listed conditional use within the R1 zoning district for Columbia County, part of the conditions for that conditional use dictate that this site cannot be used for one-off events, weddings, conferences, things like that will be prohibited. Additionally, because it's a bed and breakfast, there's, you know, the the serving of a meal aspect of the location as well. Resident, only residents, customers for the bed and breakfast are allowed to, you know, come and attend the meals. There's not a commercial kitchen association with the establishment of this bed and breakfast. And finally, the limitation within the conditional uses limits the bed and breakfast to only having six rentable rooms, which this bed and breakfast is in compliance with. There are only six rentable rooms within this structure. We just looked at some building elevations for the proposed development. These are some floor plans that they've provided us along with their application. And then finally, on this last slide, we have some concepts for outdoor space that they're hoping to emulate with their development of the site. This is the future land development map. It's within the neighborhood character area. Along with abandoning these lot lines, there, as I said, there will be six rentable rooms within the bed and breakfast as well as one room for the host to live on site. So even at, you know, seven rooms, you know, in the single dwelling, they're on a 14-acre lot. Once they abandon the lot lines, that's still within keeping of the density characteristics of the neighborhood character area on the future development map. And so due to these facts, staff is recommending approval of this conditional use application.
Thanks, sir. Is the person applying for this here? Would like to speak? Come to the microphone, please, sir.
My name is Adam Cotter. I live at 1020 Peninsula Crossing in Evans. As you can see from the map, this is part of all that land down Mullin Mulliken Roads is all my property. At the very end of it, you may remember, we're going to be building the Timber Creek neighborhood. The 50 acres of the top up here is what I'm going to be putting in my house. I bought this land right here mostly as a buffer because I didn't want anybody else developing five houses right next to my house. Then became the question of what do I do with 14 acres of land? So I thought, well, I'll take the existing house right here, remodel by remodeling, tear it down and rebuild it and make that into a little bed and breakfast that can complement what I'm doing over in my house. That's the whole plan.
Have any questions?
You couldn't plant it at Dove Field there, huh?
What?
A Dove Field.
Well, the Dove Field's actually right. The hunting goes on down here. The Dove Field's like, no.
If you were approved to do this, then the other lot lines on that 14 acres will not be. Oh, is that what I understood? So if you ever decide to come back and do something different later, you'd have to have a re-serv.
That's correct. In fact, the intention is to, if we go back to that map, everything from here around, we're planning to put it in a federal conservation easement in the next month or two. So all of this land right here should soon be under complete conservation that will no one will ever be able to build there again.
Couldn't be able to do anything with it until you built it, favorized.
That's right. So.
Conservation easement.
That's right. So I'll have one house right here, one right here, and everything else goes under easement. So we're intending to protect this. That's where I'm going to live for the next, you know, three generations is the intent. We want to, I don't know if you've ever walked that land, but there are gorgeous wetlands out there. Really pretty property.
I would think some of the people here tonight that are opposed to this, like both of them, somebody really lock it down like that. We don't have the authority to do that. I have a lot of mixed emotions about voting to approve it because we can have a lot of conversation about it all we want to, but unless it was regulated some way, you could change it at any.
I guess I could, but then I'd have to be coming back here and saying, okay, guys, I need a building permit. I need a health department permit. We've only got so much land that we can put a septic tank on because it won't tie. This is lower down here than the sewer because we're doing sewer lines down here, but they can't be tied into this house because the land goes downhill.
Know that that land is per.
I do. We've done the soil test. In fact, I think the part of our package is the soil test there. The health department's already come out, looked over the whole thing, gave us approval where we could put the septic tank.
Anyone else have any questions?
Oh, may help you to know that in order for us to perk, we're going to have to use this lot right here anyway. So we're going to have to eliminate, at the very least, we'd be eliminating that. We're going to eliminate them all, but that's, you know.
Where you drain fill.
Right. And also, the road that comes down here, we're going to make that come across to my house. So all those two lots are going to be eliminated by a road. Otherwise, I couldn't reach my house.
Thank you, sir. Anyone like, come forward, speak your name, that's please, sir.
Slade, I live at 3939 Mulliken. I'm probably less than 1,000 feet from this proposed bed and breakfast. Mr. Garrick is back here. He's next door to the proposed development. This is a road that's approximately a mile and a half long. There's six subdivisions on this mile and a half, two schools. One school is on Furious Ferry, but it entered from Mulliken Road. River Ridge Elementary is on Mulliken Road. Traffic is horrible. There's already been approval, I believe, for his development to put 50-plus houses on Mulliken Road. We didn't want that, but we we accept that. We don't want a commercial mini motel next door to Mr. Garrick, the next two doors from me. All of my neighbors don't want it. Three of my neighbors would be here tonight, but they're all out of town. Appreciate you listening to me. We just flat don't want a commercial operation. Mr. Garrick just spent a lot of money for a piece of property next door to me. He certainly doesn't want it. I doubt either one of you would want it next to your house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Anyone else that would like to speak on this issue?
Well, I have a question. The lots that are outlined there now are already approved, correct?
Correct.
To build on.
That's in the, come to the microphone.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm very cognizant of the traffic issue. By eliminating, if we had put five houses in here at two and a half, three cars per house, you're talking 15 different cars coming in and out there. By putting a bed and breakfast right here that only has six rooms, even if it's completely packed, you're talking six cars. We're talking about having one-third of the traffic that you could have had there before by doing this.
Got another question.
Sure.
That you're up here. How do you plan on getting food, bed and breakfast?
Back of my car.
Okay. So it's not going to be like a Cisco truck driving down there?
No. What we're talking about here is breakfast. There's no dinners, no lunches, no afternoon snacks. It's bacon, eggs, you know, toast, stuff that you go and get in the back of the car. The idea is to build a home that has extra people, you know, staying in it, not a, there's no commercial kitchen, there's no commercial facilities, the house.
So at full capacity, say you've had all six rooms rented, what would that look like?
12 people.
So you're going to allow two people per room?
Correct. Each room only has one bed in it. It's at max 12 people that can be there. And our intention is not to have children there. So we're not having events, we're not having kids running around, we're not having parties. This is your romantic getaway. This is your honeymoon. This is your wedding anniversary spot, not the wedding venue and certainly not the five other, you know, million-dollar houses that we could have put there, put back in.
Was there, is there a market for this product in Columbia County? Because we kind of don't have a whole lot going on that would draw you like to Charleston.
Correct. We believe there is a market for this. And even if there's, even if it's only used half the year, or even if it's only used on weekends, we're okay with this. This for me is not the major moneymaker, how we're going to survive. This is, hey, what do I do with that piece of land that I'm trying to protect? You know, so if it's only gets used half the time, we're okay with that.
And then the one room for the the host, they'll only be there when it, when you've got rooms rented, when you've got people staying, are they going to like live there?
Oh, that'll be, this is a family thing. So my, maybe my son will be living down there is the plan right now.
Okay, so that the one, yeah, one bedroom, that big one upstairs.
Yeah. So the grand total of employees will be two, like my son and his wife, will be living in the basement and they'll be taking care of the people's affairs.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak on this issue?
I live at 735 Bishop Circle. I just bought the land right to the south of it, yeah, 3948, about eight months ago. And I'm completely opposed of, I got house plans to build a house and I'm completely opposed to have a bed and breakfast right there.
39, 49 or 48?
39.
Okay, so you're right next door.
Yeah, right next door.
Questions for Mr. Garrick? Thank you, sir. Mr. Slade, you want to say something? Okay.
But I ask all of you gentlemen, which one of you would like to have a bed and breakfast next door to your house?
Thanks, sir. I'd like to have a motion to accept or deny this issue.
You know what, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we postpone. Make them, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file RZ 230602, additional use for bed and breakfast at 635 River Pines Drive to the June 29th Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor of postponement, signify, excuse me.
Just real quick, what would you like to, what would, what would you like to see staff?
I want to drive down there again.
Yeah.
And and see how the land, lay of the land is before we make a.
Yes, sir.
Is that a precedent with this? Is it, you open a can of worms, does the bed and breakfasts pop up in neighborhoods everywhere?
No, sir, not this.
I mean, how do you, how do you put a commercial building in a residential area?
Bed and breakfast in the overall county scheme of things, planning and zoning is not considered commercial.
Anyway.
But, and normally we would not postpone things, but he has a point in that he wants to make sure that, and I hate for you folks to have to come tonight and not get a final determination, but it may be to your benefit as far as we know, how the.
May not be to our benefit too.
Sir.
May not be to our benefit.
Well, that's a possibility, but would you like for him to vote?
No, no, no. I'd like him to know, I'd like to know what he wants to know.
I want to go down there and see the property, how close it all is, what the buffers are. I mean, there's, there's a lot going on here, right? Traditionally, bed and breakfast don't generate that that much traffic. They're, they're, the weekends, a couple of people come in and out. And the, and the challenge, I'm just saying, I would just like to go down there and take a look.
I don't know that it's completely traffic is the problem, but people come in and go in. And like I said, this, this man just bought a nice piece of property to build a nice house on.
Totally understand.
Have a lot of in and out all the time.
But the person that owns the property, I want to give him the benefit as well.
Of course you have.
So I'm listening to all you all as well. I'm trying to be fair on both sides.
Okay.
And the way to do that is for me to go down there and actually take a better look at it.
All right.
Don't think that we kicking his can down the road. We're just trying to make it where everybody can make an intelligent decision.
All right. I understand.
And I'm sorry you came and didn't get a.
But that's okay. So our next, next thing will be to the commission meeting. Is that right?
No, sir, it won't go to can, commission.
Come back to us.
Comes back.
Back to you here. Okay, on your next meeting.
Yes, sir.
29.
Thank you, sir. Now we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you for coming tonight, ladies and gentlemen, on both sides. Okay. Next item is Mr. Butler.
Senator Sheriff's request for rezoning at 5607 Columbia Road for a portion of property, approximately 3.37 acres. That was totaled 360.9 acres from RA to CC Community Commercial, proposed convenience store with gas pumps. The overall parcel does have S1 and M2 on it. We're only dealing with a piece of zone RA. This is the location of the property, again, showing the whole parcel, but again, the area we're talking about is right there. And again, the current zoning of the property, again, is an RA, M2, and S1. Pretty different groups are, pretty different groupings of zonings around the area. You have CC across the street. You have Patriots Parks over here is zone RA. You have an S1 over here for a funeral parlor, our funeral home, excuse me. And then the, the fair property is there. Then also within the area, you do have some S, the larger S1s here are for two quarries. And then again, more industrial uses over here. So quite a, a lot of uses in the area. There's an aerial view of the property that we're dealing with. Again, this little corner right here at Winifred Columbia and existing site. And these altar survey, one of the things that's interesting about this site, we cannot find a plat for it. So we're having to kind of rely on the altar to show us here's the area that's going to be rezoned. Again, kind of a unique situation in that regard. There's a conceptual plan of the site. So you have in the middle here, you have a proposed gas station. You do have at the back dedicated, dedicated diesel pumps and on the front, gas pumps themselves. And then you do have the access here. This is the access road for the quarry that will be used also for the, the access off of Columbia Road. Then you have two ride and ride outs on Winifred Parkway. There are some conditions proposed for Winifred Parkway that address kind of how those are designed. You do also have the proposed stormwater pond at the northern, northern end of the property and also septic at that same area as well. We have a variance request with this that we'll be seeing here in a few moments. We'll discuss that further in detail later. Again, in terms of future development, this is within a community crossroads, a neighborhood community crossroads. It does list a gas station as a named future use within this area. So it is one that, from that standpoint, requests a use itself and also the zoning classification itself, it fits within the future development map. In terms of the development around the area, again, you do have, like I was mentioning before, quarries here, industrial in this area with the, the diesel pumps that are on there makes sense. There would be larger trucks in this area, therefore it would serve those vehicles plus others coming through the, the area as well. For a land use standpoint and also a future land use standpoint, makes a lot of sense. So in regards to that, it does meet that, that future development map. In terms of the, the conditions, traffic engineering has provided several. Again, this is on a GDOT road with Columbia Road itself. So it does require them to get in touch with GDOT, go through that side of it. There are some conditions regarding what to do with Winifred Parkway. Most of that includes, you know, resurfacing that area, also putting in islands, extension of the turn lane. Again, we can get into that if we need to, but I'll kind of leave it to traffic when they want to discuss that at any time. Again, overall, staff does recommend approval with conditions of the request. That includes staff recommendation.
Perhaps someone here that would like to represent the question.
My name is Harrison Aiken. Address is 1200 Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia. As as well hit on all the highlights, effectively trying to put a gas station in where there's a future use noted for it. I think the big things to point out is it is on the west portion of it. It is adjacent to that access easement that is there. So we're really just trying to get a gas station in with high-speed diesel due to the lots of traffic as well as standard gas station.
Questions? Um, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone here opposed to this issue? Come onto the microphone, please.
My name's Kathy Richards. I live at 1044 Calmia Circle in Bartram Trail. I don't think this is a great idea for this corner of that intersection. There's a lot of really nice trees which continue to be cut down all over this county, which of course environmentally are just so important for our county, our community, our kids. The traffic in this area is already horrible. And so seeing, you know, big trucks coming in to get diesel fuel, I can't imagine that that's really going to create a great environment for anybody who lives near there. And then I really enjoy the trail at Patriots Park and just the, I mean, it's great to honestly to see a little bit of nature where.
Could I interrupt you there for a minute?
Yeah.
You realize the trail you walk in Patriots Park is for sale too, that corner?
I do, I do.
And that's an issue for another day, but.
Yeah.
These things are not just going to stay as we see them from now on.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and you know, I know.
Control the growth, but the, like the trees.
Yeah.
I mean, what, it's just a part of progress. And I'm not saying it's a good thing to do. It's just, why did I put this? That corner is not going to stay the same. Let me just leave it like that.
And I, I, I see that. I understand that. I understand that. That's a very, I mean, this area is so fastly growing and developing, but I just, I feel like there's probably some better ideas, better use.
Well, it depends on who wants that type of corner and it's own commercial. I mean, I know you'd probably like to have a nice restaurant there, but a nice restaurant is not going to come on that corner because of circumstance.
Yeah.
One other thing I'd like to point out, and I didn't mean to totally interrupt.
You're fine.
You think about all the big truck traffic that comes up and down Columbia Road, and it's because of the quarry and the other quarry primarily and the dump. They, they have a choice of going up to the corner at the end of Columbia Road to buy fuel, or they have a choice of going all the way down to Bel Air Road and buy fuel.
Yeah.
The quicker we can get them fueled up and get them to the interstate, the less traffic they're causing. You and me, I live right above that. I live in Athlin, right above where you're talking about. So this may be a blessing to get less traffic because they can pull in there and they're going to use the same road that goes to the quarry. Then they could come in, turn into that service station, come out and turn right and be gone on it. So there is some plus to this too with the traffic. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'd say, you know, there's certainly.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine.
I just get wound up sometimes.
Yeah, you're fine, fine. I think I said what I need to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Right.
Well, Quinn, I live at 244, 2448 Sunflower Drive in Evans, Georgia. I'm opposed, I believe, that we need to preserve the green space. It's a nice area for families and children bike trail. And I'm also concerned about the safety of putting something at that busy intersection there on the corner, the safety during the construction and also after, you know, everything said and done, that there will be a lot more traffic there and could pose a safety issue.
Thank you, ma'am. Bye, everybody.
David Ward at 932 Bartram Ridge. Question for the, the group here.
Question for the, the group here. Um, we heard about the gas station, hearing about the diesel was kind of new and that's the reason we come to the meeting. You've obviously given some thought to that. Are we talking a, a, almost like a truck stop sort of diesel thing? Or are we talking just the trucks that are going in and out of the quarry sort of thing?
Talking about.
I don't want to, we wouldn't want a truck stop.
Three pump type thing, just three pumps.
Yeah, so in terms of, so the truck, truck stops themselves, if we're looking at a definition for them, they include parking for trucks overnight. They also include more than three pumps. This has exactly three. They're basically meeting like the, the sprint that's at, um, Pumpkin Center. That is the exact same configuration, uh, where they have three pumps. Actually, they may have two. Anyway, they're not meeting what, what is a, a truck stop by definition. Um, a truck stop would also, if it were one, require a development regional impact review. Go to the, um, Regional Commission and also all the other local governments would comment on it. Um, and this doesn't meet that requirement.
We're not talking like semi trucks and stuff coming through here mostly.
No, well, I mean, they could. Again, it's set up where they could come and get fuel there, but it is not a truck stop. That's kind of, there's, I know the distinction is not really super clear, but it's, it's one that we don't consider it that way.
What they're going to get mostly is traffic coming out the quarry. And it's going to be designed in a way it can come in and get out fashion for the.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Michelle Wilson. I live at twenty-five forty-four Falling Branch Lane in Evans. And, um, some of our concerns were, um, the buffers that apparently you're going to, they're looking to reduce the buffers from a hundred feet to sixty. Um, and elimination of two other thirty foot property line buffers. And we're also concerned about the twenty-four hour seven operation because if it's just for the quarry, I don't think they operate twenty-four hours.
Not necessarily just for the quarry.
Well, the, the diesel, the part of it, with my understanding, part of it is.
Not, gotta rephrase this. It's, the quarry will be using it frequently, obviously, because of the little convenience of it. But I would, from time to time, well, I drive a diesel truck, a flatbed dually. I would probably use it because I live right up the road.
Okay.
But it's a regular convenience store plus the, the diesel station.
Okay, and then, um, also there was some concern about the, um, the septic tank. Why, um, they want a septic, they want a septic tank not to connect to the sewer.
Is that sewer there at this time?
That, those were our concerns about.
Is it sewer there? Thank you. Okay, this will be the last one, please.
I am Melody Robuck. I live at six fifty-one Bent Creek Drive in Coyoke Ridge. We don't need another gas station. We have a gas station, a Circle K specifically, right there at Appling Harlem Road at the end of Columbia Road. If you continue down William Feud going towards I twenty, we have gas stations there. We have Kroger, we have Sprint, we have several there. If you take a left off of William Feud on a Columbia Road, you go three to five miles and you've got numerous gas stations there. Within three to five miles of that intersection, there are several ways to get gas, diesel gas, whatever it is. Now you mentioned the quarry. Um, those of us who live on William Feud, we can hear the blasts quite often, which is fine, exactly, which is fine. But taking down all of those trees right there by the quarry, I think is going to cause noise pollution.
It's not, wait, excuse me.
Yes.
It's not going to go way deep back in those woods and take down all those trees that you're talking about.
But we are taking down some of the trees and we realize that trees buffer noise.
But you don't think that they're going to stay there from now on, do you?
I don't, but I do think we need to put more thought into what we do want to use that space for. We definitely don't need another gas station. Um, I also want to bring up, uh, light pollution. Many of us specifically in my neighborhood, we don't even have streetlights. We love having the darkness, the peace and quiet, the wildlife. The light pollution that something like that would bring, I'm assuming for twenty-four hours, seven days a week, we're going to have those big bright lights all the time. Another point I'd like to make is something someone else touched on with it being right there across from the Uchi Creek Greenway. We have a lot of kids, pedestrians, bicycle riders, things like that. That presents hazardous, a hazardous area for people who are just out enjoying their, their time with their family out there. If we've got big rigs, quarry, whatever vehicles they use, those things, I just think it's a safety issue as well. Um, we are trying to promote having a nice spot with the Greenway for families to come and enjoy their time. I realize this is going to be developed as well. I certainly don't think it's going to be something industrial. I'm sure it's going to be commercial for families to enjoy as well. And so I just don't think this is a good idea. Please do not, um, agree to build a gas station there. Thank you.
Okay. Time for us to have a motion to accept or deny this issue.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ two three zero six zero three. Rezoning a portion of the property of five six zero seven Columbia Road from RA to CC.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is various to the buffers and screening.
Sheriff's request for, for multiple variances of a property located at fifty-six oh seven Columbia Road. Three point three seven acre portion of the total of three hundred sixty point nine acres, again currently zoned RA. This is variance section nine is one thirty-nine buffers and screening. And also one forty-seven G ten B use provisions to reduce buffers, allow for twenty-four hour operation. Also reduce separation requirements for a convenience store with fuel pumps. This location of the property, we've seen it before, again, on the corner of Columbia and William Feud Road. Current zoning, again, this property is currently split zoned. Again, we're only dealing with the portion down here. In the area around it does have many different zonings, zoning classifications in effect. And this shows aerial view of the property. Again, this, can you go back, please? This, um, road is going to be important to discuss with the buffers here in a moment. And existing site. And the altar survey of the property. And the overall conceptual plan. So the first thing to discuss is the buffers. Um, so with the property itself, when you have CC adjacent to residential cultural, you have a thirty foot structural buffer. Um, they're requesting to basically reduce that, um, and also get, we get rid of it in some respects, um, along this, uh, road here and then also on the northern side of the property. Again, it's one of those situations where yes, the property is an RA. However, it does access a quarry. Um, it does have a access road on the west side of it. So in terms of how it functions, it is not really residential in nature at this point. Could it be in the future, maybe, um, if someone wants to live that close to a quarry. So again, that's the buffer side of it and, um, the buffer reduction from our standpoint. Um, again, really no issues with that. Again, it's looking at the actual use of the property, not just the zoning itself. Separation requirements, um, that is, uh, for any kind of appurtenance on the property, it's buildings, what have you. Again, this kind of illustrates that with the, um, the canopy and also the building itself. You have a hundred foot separation, uh, between the building itself and residential zone, residentially zoned property. Again, similar situation with the buffer. Yes, the property is residentially zoned, however, not really used for that. Um, so again, the one that's closest is the, uh, the canopy. It's about sixty feet. And then the building itself is within, it, it, I think it's ninety feet or so. Again, no issues there. Uh, that is intended to, if you do have a gas station, uh, next to a actual residential property, um, that separation will then, then allow you to have a good separation for to keep the lighting away from the residential property. Gives you enough separation for buffers. Um, it's basically making them a good neighbor, uh, to actually residentially use property. Our last one is twenty-four hour operation. Um, this is one that we've seen multiple times, uh, with a competitor to them. Uh, but again, we've seen several gas stations request this. Uh, it's something that was added back in twenty sixteen to our code. Um, not all gas stations are twenty-four hours in Columbia County. Um, but again, they do exist. Um, usually what we look at for that is what is nearby? What's going to be impacted by lighting? What's going to be, what is going to be detrimental? Again, like we talked about before, the buffers, there's no residential, residential property within anywhere close to this. Um, you know, before, uh, the street on William Feud Parkway, we had a separation over five hundred feet. Um, again, this one's, it is much more than that. We didn't even look at it because it's so far away. Uh, so again, really no concern there. Um, there is, you know, again, the, the making the argument from, from the applicant side of why they need it. Um, there's going to be an element of economics to it. Um, that's always a little questionable for a variance, but it's one of those things that, yes, we've done for. Um, there's usually been an economic element, no matter what we do with it. Um, just wanted to point that out, but again, not in this situation, really no concerns from our standpoint. Um, overall, staff recommends approval of the requests to reduce, our two reduce buffers, allow for our, our, our operation and also reduce separation requirements for a convenience store of fuel pumps. Staff recommendation.
Anyone like to speak for or against this variance?
The applicant can speak first if he likes. Wow.
Uh, thank you, Will. I think Will also touched on all of these. I think the one thing, um, that we just want to highlight is some of the adjacent, uh, gas stations in the area are twenty-four hours as well. So that's, that's the primary reason for trying to go, uh, or request that variance. And then, um, additionally, just with the stormwater pond and the access road that's there, um, just really looking at those as providing some of that buffer, uh, um, the other residential properties. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak about the variance?
Yes, on the back. I'm Tom Metter. I live on twenty-five oh six Lowell Drive in Bartram Trail. Uh, one thing that I don't think people are considering either, we're talking about the light problems maybe. You turn into Bartram Trail, there's eighteen acres that y'all approved not long ago, it's going to be stripped. All those trees are going to be gone. So there's a possibility there can be some light from that to Bartram Trail. Bartram Trail is not that far from that corner. But please, hopefully, consider that. And y'all didn't give me a chance to speak a little bit ago because I was one of the last ones. I just want to make one other statement. I know there's going to be road construction there. You're going to have to to get in and out of that corner there for a gas station. We've got so much road construction going on now. Lewisville Road, Columbia, Columbia Road. We can't hardly get in and out now anymore. We're going to be dead in the water. It's a bad, bad situation right now. So I, I wish you consider, if you're going to do it, put it off until you get that road construction done. It sounds like it's a done deal already, but put it off. Because we need to get some of this road construction done before you do anything else. Somebody's going to get hurt up on those roads up if they hadn't already. But also please consider the lighting. Bartram Trail with that land is going to be stripped. Eighteen acres right there in the corners you go in. Thank you.
What, what construction's going on on Columbia Road?
Columbia Road?
I thought, I thought you said Columbia Road.
I did.
We're about some, yeah.
The corner of Columbia Road, Lewiston Road.
Okay, the Lewiston Road project.
Yeah.
Okay.
That project's gone on a long, long time.
I live right, gonna go on a long, two hundred yards down from there.
That should have been done at night anyway, but anyway, I'm done.
Should have been done.
By the way, just to address that, that's a state project. We don't have.
Okay, but it's, it's a serious problem.
I understand. Like I told you, I live right up the road in Athlin. I go through there every day.
And I, I know we want progress in Columbia County, but let's not push so fast that somebody's going to get hurt. That, you know, safety's involved. There's all sorts of things involved. And I know y'all understand it, but let's slow down a little bit here. Okay?
Thanks, sir.
I've got a question for staff. They, they're just going to do a turn lane here at this corner, right? There's not, there's not going to be a major road project involved with this. They've got to add a turn lane and an island, I believe.
Yeah, so the condition, hold on a second.
Five hundred.
Can't remember offhand. Let's see. So the condition was, yeah, you have that and also the raised center. Island on William Feud Parkway. And then you'd have, let's see, an extension of the existing right turn lane, William Feud Parkway, serving southbound lanes, serving southbound traffic. So that intersection will change. And you have right in, right outs here, so nobody's going to be turning from William Feud Parkway into this.
It was a turn lane.
No, there's no, there's no, no left turn from William Feud into the site based on the.
Okay, that's just, that's just a block left turn then coming on William.
There would be a raised median
Okay.
down the middle and the lot, or the, excuse me, the lane configurations would be different at the William Feud and Columbia intersection. The applicant would be responsible for, you know, this improvement kind of in this general area here as well as that, um, continuation of that turn lane, right turn lane in off of Columbia Road onto the, uh, quarry access that currently exists.
I just, I'd have to use Lewiston Road, which has been being constructed forever and it's, that's what I think of when I think of road projects. So I was going to make sure we weren't doing something that humongous there.
No, uh-uh.
Okay, we have a motion to accept these.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve file VA two three zero six zero four. Variances to reduce the buffer width and remove the structural buffer requirement, reduce the separation requirements and permit twenty-four hour operation for a portion of the property at fifty-six oh seven Columbia Road.
Second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. If none opposed. Next item is Mrs. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to section ninety dash one thirty-nine buffers and screening for property located off Stable Bridgeway and currently zoned R two single family residential. This is the location of the site, um, off kind of the west end of the existing phases of Four Oaks. Actually essentially in the middle of the Bartram Trail PUD, although it is zoned R two single family residential. Uh, that happened when the property kind of east of this, uh, that you see is all zoned R two was split out from the original Bartram Trail PUD, which was quite a bit larger when originally zoned. Um, and then it said the, this property was actually pulled out of it and rezoned to R two. Uh, so the rest of the other phases of Four Oaks have developed out or are in the process. Um, this is for phase five of the development, which will include an extension of Stable Bridgeway, um, across the golf course to access kind of the, the developable larger portion of this property, um, off to the west. This shows the area of the site. It is currently an undeveloped property. And the existing site from the end of Stable Bridgeway. And they have submitted a concept plan with this request, which we'll be going into a, a little more detail with in a moment. Uh, for the purposes of the, the variance, um, what we're looking at is really the road extension in this area. Uh, there's a requirement when you develop R two property adjacent to, uh, property zone PUD that you provide a thirty foot buffer. Uh, that would apply along this road extension as well. Uh, that is intended to be an extension of the public road, so the minimum right of way is fifty feet. They'd then need the thirty foot buffer on each side of the road, so they would need a hundred and ten feet total width to run the road through there with the appropriate buffer. Uh, however, that parcel, um, when they divide, subdivided it out and created this, this property, um, did not accommodate that, that buffer width. So this parcel's closer to, to fifty to fifty-five feet at its narrowest point and they simply don't have the width to, to meet the buffer requirements. Um, I do want to note they are not requesting any variance to the buffers around the rest of the site. So everything around the actual lots will meet the county code as far as the buffers. Uh, so the only portion that we're requesting the variance to is this road extension. And so here you can see the, the narrow width there, uh, where they are requesting the variance. And they have submitted a, an alternate landscape plan for this area to do street trees and some, um, decorative grasses to make this area a little more aesthetically pleasing, um, even though they don't have the width to do the thirty foot buffers on each side, just to, to dress it up and make it a little more attractive along the road. Um, and we do have conditions essentially requiring them to follow through on that plan. Uh, so the recommended conditions, uh, clarify that the buffer width is only reduced along that road extension and not around the, the back of any of the actual lots. And that landscaping plans for the portion of the buffer with that reduced width. So again, that road extension will be coordinated with the county landscape architect and approved with the preliminary plat. So essentially m- making them follow through with that on the construction plans and the installation of that. And with those conditions, staff is recommending approval.
This is, uh, I play golf over there. And this to address you, people that are worried about the trees as well as I am. But where this is coming out the back of Four Oaks, it's going out into actually a field. Not going to be any trees disturbed. Biggest disturbance is going to be how close it gets to number fourteen green and fifteen tee box. People continue to play golf on the same pattern that they're playing now. It's going to tighten up things a lot. It's only going across a field. I just thought I'd clarify that before we do it further. Anyone here that would like to address this issue? Come right here, sir.
Agent, I'm Tyler Friendly with Houston Holmes. Uh, our corporate address is eight two one nine North Crossing Court, Portson, Georgia. Uh, Ms. Danielle, I have a letter from Jason.
Okay.
I, I didn't send it in before. I'm happy to answer any questions for you guys. A couple of things that I do want to cover. There's no intention for us to masquerade the site, so we'll just be putting a road in. We'll grade the lights as we go. We did talk to Jason, talked to him a couple of weeks ago and then met back with him today. One of the things that he stated, he didn't love our landscape plan. He doesn't want trees along that buffer zone there. He said it's gonna mess up his grass and it's gonna mess up, you know, a couple of other things with the golf course. We're willing to work with Jason and the county to determine what works best for everybody.
How close is the green to the road?
Ah, I would, I would be lying to you if I told you, I'm not sure. I can certainly get with Ms. Danielle.
I can tell you about what it is. I've been over there all the time.
Buddy duck hook and hit that?
If they hit the ball too far on 14 as a par three, if it flies to green, it's gonna be on the edge of the road. There's gonna be very little room on either side, but it will work, what they're attempting to do. And they, as he said, they met with the property owner at Bartram and they've come to a conclusion, they've worked together with it. I don't think there's gonna be any real adjustment. Especially it's gonna look a lot different.
Yeah, sure. And if it matters, one of the things Jason wanted was a bathroom back there. So we're gonna install a bathroom for him. I think that'd be good for everybody.
Comfort house.
There you go.
Or they call it on a golf course.
They've been working pretty closely together. Something that's just done a long time ago.
Yeah, sure.
Has come time to do something with it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone like to address this issue?
Ms. Leslie. RC, what do you, Bartram Trail? I just wanted to point out on that particular piece, the area that traverses the golf course itself, those buffers, those are the golf courses. But the rest of the buffers that go around that piece, those are actually Bartram Trail's trust that 60-foot. I just want to point that out because it's not clear on the plat. It seems to call it golf course buffer in some places, but it's not. It's the 60-foot around the rest of the piece that's owned by the Bartram Trail.
Whereabouts?
Keep going back.
This area.
And the other areas that completely go around it.
And that belongs to Bartram.
That way.
That's right, that belongs to the Bartram Trail Trust HOA.
Right, and that was a condition of that zoning that I mentioned earlier, where this all got pulled out as R2, was they had to dedicate 30 feet to Bartram Trail. So that is shown on the plats and the county maps as a dedicated, essentially buffer strip between these R2 properties and Bartram Trail.
And so the only reason I brought that up, because if there's anything, any discussions beyond the buffer that traverses the golf course, the HOA should be involved in the discussion.
Sir.
Where he's getting, Houston's having to do 30-foot on his own side of the line though.
Correct, yes.
So it's, okay. I thought it's what we were dealing with, but I wanted to make sure.
Any more questions concerning this issue?
My name is Carol Yuki, I live on Hereford Farm. I don't have anything really to do with this subdivision, except I have a few questions because they're developing all around my home. This is down for me, the subdivision. How many, what is the, what roads are gonna have an incentive for coming in and going out of this subdivision? Back on Hereford Farm Road, out of the main road out of Four Oaks? Or is there gonna be another road coming out on Columbia Road somewhere?
This will all come out on Hereford Farm. Now, they are connecting Four Oaks and South Wind, so they'll have two entrances out onto Hereford Farm, but they do not have any connection to Columbia Road.
So that's gonna be more, so how many houses are gonna be in this new group?
This new concept is 16 houses.
16 houses. So that's gonna come in from the Four Oaks subdivision. And.
So the food line's down here, so intersection of Columbia and Hereford. The main entrance into.
Yeah, I live down Hereford Farm, so that's why I'm trying to see, that's gonna.
Kind of up off the screen there.
That's gonna be behind you. There's a, no, that's not.
Yeah, you're.
Yeah, that's coming in off the other area. So this is gonna really be adjacent to the golf course itself. I went down there the other day and saw where it's gonna be, it's gonna be quite on the golf course.
That's what I was saying.
Inside of it, yep.
Those are gonna be some very nice homes, I'm assuming. There again, that's gonna be more traffic coming out on Hereford Farm. And we're not finished with this yet, because then further down where I live, they're gonna have. Gonna blend in with South Wind subdivision. I was just checking to see if there was an outlet here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak about this issue? Okay, we have a motion to accept or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file VA 23-06-03. Variance to reduce the buffer requirement for an extension of Stable Bridge Way.
Second.
All in favor of signifying by raising your right hand?
One last, one last item, Mr. Chair.
One more item.
Number five.
Okay, we've got Ms. Montgomery with a conceptual plan.
Yes, sir, so this is the concept plan for Phase 5 of Four Oaks that we just saw for the variance. Obviously, this concept plan will be contingent to an extent on the approval of the variance by the Board of Commissioners. This is the same property we were just looking at, at the end of Stable Bridge Way. And again, currently zoned R2 and being developed under that zoning. So the concept plan calls for an extension of Stable Bridge Way to a cul-de-sac. This proposed cul-de-sac is over 1,000 feet long, and therefore it does require specific approval from you as the planning commission. County code limits cul-de-sacs to 700 feet without that approval. In this case, the parcel's surrounded by the Bartram Trail Golf Course and the Wilderness Trust, so there's really not anywhere for this road to connect to. So in this case, staff sees no concerns with that cul-de-sac being a little longer than normal. The fire marshal has noted that the turnaround design may need to be modified, but that will be addressed during the plan review process. The extension of Stable Bridge Way would serve an additional 16 single-family lots. And they did provide a lot table, and it shows all of the lots exceed the minimum requirement of 10,000 square feet. And there is a 30-foot undisturbed buffer shown around the perimeter of the site. And that does meet the requirement for R2 against PUD, with the caveat that if they do end up masquerading this site, that buffer would have to be increased to 50 feet. Water and sewer service are required for this development and are provided. Public water will be extended with the extension of Stable Bridge Way. And public sewer will be provided by connecting to the existing main on the west side of the development. This connection does require crossing property not owned by the applicants and will require easement agreements with the affected property owner. And staff is recommending approval.
Like to address this issue?
I have much more than what Ms. Danielle starts off with, but I'm happy to answer any questions about it. Thank you.
Anyone like to address this issue before we vote? We have a motion to accept or deny.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Four Oaks, Phase 5 of Stable Bridge Way.
Second.
All in favor of signifying by raising your right hand? This concludes our business for this evening, thank you all for coming. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.